Welcome to the October 18th pre-town meeting information session. This is an information session for our upcoming October 25th, 2022 special town meeting. I'm Town Administrator Matt Hanson, joined here this evening with Ron Kohane, the Chairman of the Board of Selectmen, as well as Colin Loizell, our Assistant Town Administrator. Thank you very much for joining the show. If you haven't been to a pre-town meeting information session before, the purpose of this meeting is to provide an opportunity for an explanation of the articles, as well as a question and answer period. This meeting is not intended for debate. That is best left for town meeting floor, where all of your fellow residents will be with you. But we answer as many questions as we can this evening to make sure we're well-prepared for the actual town meeting, and hopefully avoid some duplicate questions on town meeting floor the night of town meeting. There are a few residents in the audience, so we'll be asking for each article if they have questions, and you may also email Colin Loizell if you have any questions while you're watching at cloizell@tingensborom.gov. We will get started with Article One. There are only 12 articles on this warrant, so it's not a long special town meeting warrant. Article One is a transfer of funds from free cash. We have $200,000 going to the General Stabilization Fund and $50,000 for Winslow School hazardous material abatement. This $200,000 was anticipated to go into the stabilization fund at the annual town meeting. This is really just a housekeeping article. It was listed as going into the fund, but it was missing from one of the articles to actually effectuate the transfer at the annual town meeting. So we're just making sure the transfer gets done this fall in the same fiscal year. The $50,000 for the Winslow School hazardous materials abatement is really, if needed, funding. If we don't use it, it will certainly just go back to free cash, but we had a revised study done on the Winslow School. Some of the state regulations have changed a bit on hazardous materials, and our new consultant has found more materials than originally anticipated. In total, this will bring the total amount of funding available for hazardous material abatement up to $200,000, and we expect to go out to bid within the next few weeks for this work. Any questions on Article One? And we do have one resident coming up to the microphone.
First of all, I would ask that we have larger print for the actual handouts.
Sure.
This font is pretty small.
Okay.
See if we can get a little bigger for a town meeting.
We can take care of that.
Okay, for us old guys, you know. But this is small even for a young person. So my question about Article One, first of all, $200,000. At annual town meeting in 2018, we borrowed $120,000 for hazardous abatement. Is that $200,000 in addition to the $120,000 of 2018?
No, so just to clarify, $200,000 is just going into the general stabilization account, and $50,000 is just going to the hazardous material abatement?
I was looking at the wrong line.
Yeah.
Sorry about that.
Okay.
Sorry about that.
No problem.
But there was $120,000 in hazardous abatement we borrowed in 2018. Has that money all been spent for abatement at Winslow School?
Oh, good question. No, so this will be in addition to that funding. Of the $120,000, we've had two different inspections done that have used about $20,000 of that. So we still have $100,000 available of the original appropriation.
Okay.
This second updated hazardous material assessment has found it's some additional material.
Okay, then we had $50,000 voted by the Community Preservation Committee to be spent for abatement, so the 50 plus an additional 50 for a total of $100,000.
Additional.
Additional, okay. And we had, I know you had the final assessment. Did that come in low enough that it's going to be covered with the $100,000?
So we received these quantities on Friday, and we sent them to a consultant, well, an abatement company that's going to provide us with an estimate this week.
Okay, okay.
So we'll know prior to town meeting.
So the estimate's not done, not quite done yet?
Correct.
Okay. The other question I would ask, it may come up at town meeting, is I saw that we're going to appoint a 250 Middlesex Road Visioning Committee, so we're kind of leaving out Winslow School part of it, calling it 250 Middlesex Road Visioning. Why are we spending more money on abatement and not wait for the findings of this committee?
Sure. So the abatement of the building, the vast, vast majority of it, if not all of it, is going to have to be done whether we demolish the building or renovate the building. So all of the lead paint would have to be removed, all of the asbestos that's on the piping in the floors, we would have to take that out if we're going to demolish it, we would also have to take it out if we're going to renovate it.
So there's no economy to wait?
Not, no, not in any substantial amount.
Okay, thank you.
Yep, no, great questions, thank you. Any other questions on Article One? Okay, move on to Article Two. This is an article for the Sewer Enterprise Fund regarding their retained earnings. They are looking to transfer the sum of $78,525 from their retained earnings account towards their fiscal year '23 capital line. This was originally budgeted in the Sewer Commission's fiscal year '22 budget, but delays in getting the equipment have pushed the project into fiscal year '23, and this is for the purchase of three station grinder pumps. Any questions on Article Two? That one is pretty straightforward. All right, move to Article Three. Zoning Bylaw Amendments and Recodification. The zoning bylaw has been reorganized through the efforts of the Zoning Review Committee to give it a more conventional and intuitive structure with no substantive changes to the original language. Text formatting and section structures were standardized to make it more consistent throughout. Minor alterations to text were made only when it would help clarify meaning, and in limited cases, language was removed if it was incompatible with Mass. General Law or judicial decisions, which would not be accepted by the Attorney General's Office. The updates also incorporates the replacement of Board of Selectmen with the term Select Board. There will be future phases where this zoning bylaw review committee is continuing their work and will bring more substantive changes at future town meetings, but for purposes of this town meeting, it is just the recodification and the reorganization of the bylaws. Any questions? Yes.
Okay, not so much a question, just rephrasing, so I make sure I understand. We looked at the zoning bylaws that we have, and we organized them and brought them up to Mass. General Law.
The main intent really was organizing the review of Mass. General Law, I think, was more sort of secondary.
Did you hear that mentioned?
Yes. There was a few minor changes. Our town planner could probably go into more detail, but I would say the main changes, if you look at the article which I put up on the screen, our entire zoning bylaw previously was only broken down into five sections, and now it's going to be broken down into 11 sections. So a lot of information isn't going to be tucked within a section, and then a subsection, then a subsection of that section. All the definitions are now in one specific area. All general regulations are now in one area, et cetera, et cetera.
Okay, I would say our town planner Eric and I had conversations and emails, and he really explained it very well to me, so I appreciate what you did, Eric, with all of that, and he knows my concern is, there's nothing in the recodification of this that's going to create another unintended circumstance like 100 units of housing on a non-conforming golf course.
Correct.
Thank you.
Any other questions on Article Three? Okay. Article Four is a zoning amendment regarding the town's sign bylaw. Sort of simultaneously, but separate from the recodification, this is an item that has been on the town's radar for a long time regarding the town's sign regulations. Many businesses, to meet sort of current market trends, have had to apply for variances for their signage, whether they want to increase size or number, and it's a cumbersome process. So this bylaw amendment would grant the Zoning Board of Appeals the ability to review requests for additional signs at businesses located only within the B3 or I district, industrial district, that were previously not permitted, as well as the ability to allow for larger signs than previously permitted. This does not grant the additional signs by right. Again, it would still be a special permit process, and the Zoning Board of Appeals would have to find that the variation in the number and/or size is not incongruous with the applicable zoning districts and not injurious to traffic or safety conditions. Are there any questions on Article Four? We'll get you a closer chair, Mr. Crawford.
I'll sit here next time. Sorry, sorry, guys, but I'm a digger, right? Okay. And I think I am asking questions that citizens may ask at meeting time, too, because I've gotten some feedback on them. This thing with Article Four signs, which I also had spoken to our town planner about via email, is that the bylaw says that the Zoning Board of Appeals can approve either or a one sign or two signs, one or two. They have the option for one or two, and one of the signs that would be allowed by this bylaw was 100 square feet. We used to have, largest sign could be 100 square feet. Now that sign can be 130 square feet. My math is that's a 10 by 13?
Correct.
Pretty big sign. Two 10 by 13s. So my concern is that Tingusboro is going to look just like Nashua. Sign, sign, sign. And I even heard some discussion from the Zoning Board of Appeals about some concerns with, everyone's going to fight for a bigger sign. They're going to move out, and I'm going to get a bigger sign, a bigger sign. So I, that's what's concerning about me, is the aesthetics of our town. Okay? And it's going to be hard for, once the Zoning Board approves one person or one entity, everyone's going to think they deserve it, because the business always wants a bigger sign. So that's why I have some concerns.
All right, I understand. Yeah, Eric, if you'd like to just respond?
Sure, thanks for bringing all the questions to the information session for the sign bylaw. I just want to point out that while the 30% increase is part of the language, I mean, it would only be for attached signs, so this would not be for signs that were along the roadway or freestanding signs. It is still up to the discretion of the Zoning Board of Appeals, and the primary reason for the amendment itself is to distinguish the difference, or because we need to distinguish the difference between variance and special permit, which I think you were alluding to previously, but from a legal perspective, the variant, the criteria that a variance that is issued by the Zoning Board of Appeals requires proof of hardship. The special permit gives more discretion. After reviewing with town council, essentially assuring that the ZBA could either grant or deny applications for these special permits, you know, the response was that it's truly a discretion of the board itself, and while, you know, denials might get appealed, there's nothing necessarily wrong with that, but he believes that denials would be defensible, you know, if denied by the Zoning Board of Appeals, mostly because it's truly discretion that's given to the board. This also gives businesses the opportunity to come in and apply for multiple signs on their buildings if they don't abut or don't have frontage on multiple roads. Currently, the zoning bylaw would only allow more than one attached sign if the building had frontage or faced multiple roadways, but we do have buildings in town where there's either directional traffic or something else that prevents the business from getting seen through bypasser buys, where this would help address their business. Thanks.
Well, thank you, Eric. It's good to note some of the additional rationale behind why, you know, why this was brought forward, some of the cases that it's really intended for. And I do think maybe at town meeting we can note that in the introduction. That's a really important point you brought up regarding this being for attached signs only. There are completely different set of regulations and size dimensions for the detached signs that businesses can also have along the roadway. Any other question? Sure.
I'm not sure I understand this. The zoning bylaw would give them discretion, the Zoning Board of Appeals would give them discretion that they didn't have before, isn't that correct?
That's, well...
They had discretion, but now, now the bylaw is going to say it's going to be by right?
No, no.
Well, clarify that for me.
Sure. Nothing in the amendment provides anything new by right. It changes the way the Zoning Board of Appeals approaches an application, so because the bylaw was completely void of a special permit process for either an additional sign or for a change in the size, by defining the criteria or defining the process as a special permit process, it actually gives the Zoning Board of Appeals an opportunity to better defend a denial, only because they can say, well, it didn't meet these criteria, and reference that, you know, in their decision. Or it gives them an opportunity to approve, you know, a request for a special permit, and if that was appealed, it gives them the opportunity to defend it, mostly because the criteria or the hurdles that they'd have to get over for a decision, whether it's a denial or approval, are easier for them to explain and identify than the criteria that's required by statute for a variance. So the bylaw, just to sum up, the bylaw itself still requires, it gives a discretion to the Zoning Board of Appeals, but only for issuing or denying special permits requested. Thank you.
Any other questions on Article Four? Okay. Article Five is to accept Mass. General Law, Chapter 59, Section Five, Clause 22G, Disabled Veterans Real Estate Tax Exemptions. This is a short article. It would accept a provision of Mass. General Law that will expand the ownership eligibility criteria for disabled veterans seeking certain tax exemptions for their real estate property tax to account for situations where the veteran is still living in a property but has transferred the legal ownership to a trust or a similar entity. Any questions on Article Five? All right, great. We'll move on to Article Six, Town General Bylaws. This is an amendment regarding the town's Affordable Housing Trust. The original Affordable Housing Trust bylaw was established by town meeting in February of 2015. This allowed the town to establish the Affordable Housing Trust Committee and accept funds into our trust fund account. The committee was formed in 2018 and began to develop a declaration of trust, which further defined their mission and goals. The declaration was then approved by the Board of Selectmen and filed at the Registry of Deeds. This proposed bylaw amendment will bring the town's original trust bylaws into alignment with the declaration of trust that was developed a few years later, between 2018 to 2020. Really, the main changes include that the Board of Selectmen appointees will now include at least one tenant who earns low or moderate income and resides in subsidized housing here in Tingusboro, and clarifications regarding the ability of the trust to utilize Community Preservation Committee funding, which is dedicated for affordable housing development here in town. Any questions regarding Article Six? Article Seven. This is rescinding prior funding authorization through the Community Preservation Committee. In 2002, the annual town meeting voted to authorize $250,000 for the Indian Lane property. This article specifically said that the funding would be utilized by the Tingusboro Housing Authority. The Housing Authority has spent significant time attempting to acquire the property from the Commonwealth and have decided that they're no longer interested in moving forward due to the many hurdles that the state put forward. Rescinding this vote will allow the CPC to authorize that funding to the newly established Tingusboro Affordable Housing Trust to follow through with the project. The Housing Trust will have an easier time working with the state to acquire the property. That's our understanding. Any questions on Article Seven? Article Eight are three separate funding appropriations for the Community Preservation Committee. $3,000 for Lake Massapog weed control, $25,000 in administrative costs to help with the establishment of a Tingusboro Land Trust, and $250,000 going towards the Tingusboro Housing Trust for renovation and construction of affordable housing on Indian Lane. This is the same $250,000 that was rescinded in the prior article. Any questions on those three funding allotments? Great. Article Nine, this is a town general bylaw. This is actually a fully new bylaw on solicitor registration. So this will see if the town general bylaws will require door-to-door solicitors to follow a prescribed registration process, not to read the whole bylaw, but to highlight the key points. This is for for-profit organizations who must register with the police department and pay a registration fee of $25. The police department will perform a background check and provide instructions to the solicitors. It will limit solicitation hours from 9:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. Solicitors will be provided a badge from the town so that visitors know that they have been registered with the police department and/or solicitors who have been registered. And it will provide residents with the ability to join a no solicitation list and/or have no solicitation signs, which will have to be followed by these solicitors. And we do want to note that this does not affect nonprofit organizations or other educational, civic organizations, fundraising, things like that. This article is at the request of the Tingusboro Police Chief, and as we note, it expressly applies to for-profit activities. Any questions on Article Nine?
Yes, Billy Crawford. So the fact is, consumers end up paying fees that are charged. It's the consumer that pays. The businesses don't, nobody pays, except the consumer. So contractors like driveway pavers and tree removal companies have expensive setup costs. Sometimes a consumer may get a better price because the outfit is already in the area. So my question, I have three. If a contractor is working next door, and he comes over and asks me if I need a tree removed, does he have to first go to the police station and get a registration?
The way I read the bylaw, and it's pretty straightforward, I'll read just the first few sentences here on who this applies to. It specifically says it shall be unlawful for any person to solicit orders or subscriptions for goods or services, or to sell goods or services door-to-door without having registered with the police department. The point of that, as we noted, is so they have to provide proof of identification. We know their name, we know the type of product they're selling, and the town can do a background check on those individuals. So if residents do have someone come to their door, whether it's a tree company that is cutting the tree across the street, or anywhere else in town, you may not know, you could call the police department and check to make sure that they're a legitimate company that's been vetted, it's a legitimate individual who's had a background check through the police department.
But it's a tree company, I know, and I've seen him drive down my street 100 times, and he just happens to be next door and come and see me.
It certainly wouldn't prevent you from knocking, knocking on the car window of a business you see in the area and saying, would you like to quote my, you know, project while I'm in the area? It doesn't restrict residents from doing that, but it does restrict businesses from soliciting door-to-door.
It's happened to me before where the, he was reservicing the driveway next door, and he came over, and I'm in the neighborhood, I can save you money, because I'm already here. You're saying, probably couldn't do that anymore.
Without registering first?
You're going to call the police and complain about it?
No, I'm saying, I want him, I wanted him to come over.
Right, so he's got, he's updated to the bylaw, unless there's a complaint?
Oh, so he can do it if he doesn't get caught?
Yeah.
I don't, I don't think that'd be cool, to say, to say it that way.
No, I mean, I suppose, and we may be splitting hairs a little bit here, if he sees a neighbor across the street out in the driveway who seems interested in what he's doing, and he says, oh, are you, are you interested in a quote while I'm here? I don't, I don't see that as an issue, but if he leaves his equipment or comes back the next day and starts going door-to-door through the rest of the neighborhood, I do think it would be applicable to this bylaw.
Okay, that, that happened with, has happened also. And the next thing is, what are the hours at the police department to get registered for solicitation? Are they open on Saturdays?
So as part of this process, I don't have it here in the packet, but they'll put forward a registration form that will let them know who in the department they can submit it to. They won't have to submit in person. They could submit the application to a member of the police department 24/7, and the department will get back to them, I believe it's within three business days, to set up the appointment to register and have them come in. So you can submit it at your convenience, and then they'll work with you to pick an appropriate time to, to come in.
Okay, three days doesn't sound like much of a convenience to me, but okay.
Any other questions on Article Nine?
I have one. Do other communities have laws that are similar to this, or bylaws?
Yes, town council, when he spoke to the Board of Selectmen, I believe he said most communities he works with have some bylaw. This bylaw was taken, the bones of the bylaw were taken directly from Chumsford, and then town council added some language that he's seen in several of his other communities. Specifically, the selectman asked him to clarify language regarding nonprofits and charitable organizations and, you know, educational institutions. So we added some of that language in, and we also increased some of the language regarding the suspension and enforcement mechanisms to add a little bit more teeth to the language. So town council helped craft it, but all based on things he's seen approved in other communities, and then because it is a bylaw language that's ultimately already been approved by the Attorney General in other communities as well. Any other questions on Article Nine? Okay. Article Ten is the Town General Bylaw Amendment Regarding the Regulation of Dogs. Do want to just note and clarify, first, we do already have a bylaw on the books. It's a few pages long. It, it goes through many areas of dog registration, including licensing, vaccinations, et cetera. We only have a few specific sections listed in the town warrant, because only a few specific sections regarding definitions, restraint, and the leash law are proposed to be amended at this town meeting. So the specific changes that are being proposed are to change the definition of an at-large dog to only mean off the premise of the owner. Our current definition, you can actually have an at-large dog even if it's on your own property. So in that regard, the bylaw change is actually going to provide a little bit more flexibility to dog owners, as long as the dog is on your property, it would not meet that definition of being an at-large dog. Expanding the leash law hours to 24/7. Right now, it's 7:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m. Technically, the leash law is not in effect after 9:00 p.m. There's also another definition of roaming free, so that same 24-hour provision will be added in. Right now, the dog is not considered roaming free if it's after 9:00 p.m. at night, it's just exempt currently. This will also add some discretion for the animal control officer to determine other means in which a dog is under control. So similar to how we're changing the definition in the first portion there regarding being on your own property, currently, people have many ways of keeping their dog under control. Some people walk their dog with the leash in their hand and control a dog by voice commands, they use an electronic collar with a beeping system, et cetera. The current leash law, I don't know exactly when it was written, but it was many years ago, it doesn't contemplate any of that. The dog is either on a leash, or it's off the leash, and it's at-large and roaming free. There's no discretion for the animal control officer. So there's two sections that are changing that are going to provide some more discretion for residents and for the animal control officer, and then there's really one major change to two definitions that is going to expand the hours of the leash law and the roaming free definition, 24 hours a day. Any questions on Article Ten? All right. Article Eleven is a special act to establish a Department of Public Works. I'm going to get into the actual nuts and bolts of our article, but I want to start by discussing the background and some items to consider. Our current highway department building requires some short-term capital investments, regardless of whether or not the town moves forward with the Department of Public Works, but if our long-term vision for that department is a Department of Public Works, that's going to affect how we invest in that building and the staffing moving forward. Our department is still down one laborer from 1999. Now, the board did add one laborer this year, so prior to this year, we were actually down two laborers from 1999. We currently have a $1,000 state earmark for public works facilities improvement, which can be used for design, construction, renovation, or renovations. And we just want to note that the town has been investing significantly over the last five years in our public roadway infrastructure. We've hired a town engineer, we've dedicated additional funds to road maintenance, and the Board of Selectmen intends to continue that investment moving forward. These discussions of a DPW started over 23 years ago. There were plans, ultimately, I'm not, I'm not going to read through this whole slide this evening, but there was a highway superintendent at the time, the Board of Selectmen had entered discussions on making him Department of Public Works Director, but due to some unforeseen circumstances, that plan ultimately fell apart. unforeseen circumstances, that plan ultimately fell apart. There are several pros, cons, and cost savings. Efficiency, coordination, operational oversight, and management of multiple departments, sharing resources, this includes forestry, cemetery, parks and recreation maintenance, sewage and sewage systems, streets and roads, and buildings and grounds maintenance, less duplication of services, opportunities for jointly provided services, again, coordination, expansion of services, less jurisdictional confusion, and economies of scale. There are some potential costs and cons, um, which are a little bit harder to quantify. There's obviously, anytime you make a change, potential for some perceived changes in distribution and control of resources, um, you know, policymaking versus administration. Some potential costs, there may in the future be some additional administrative costs, even though there are no immediate costs anticipated right now, we've put an estimate of maybe five thousand dollars. The DPW superintendent, we have that as a ten to fifteen thousand dollar potential cost, because we anticipate we'll be selecting a DPW Director from our existing town staff, either a highway and um town engineer or a highway foreman in the future. This is also offset by the fact that long ago, the highway superintendent position was vacated, and it was never filled, and my understanding, this was before my time, but it was never filled because the town intended at some point to create a DPW. As we noted, this will be offset from hiring from within, um, and there may be some potential costs in the future for expanded office space at the highway garage slash DPW, but as we note, that's likely gonna be needed as the town grows regardless of the title of the department. The savings are a bit hard to quantify, but it's mostly highlighted in the pros column, efficiency and increased uh level of services, so the actual dollar savings um are difficult to quantify. If we're being more efficient with our work, we don't necessarily uh go home earlier and, and write a check back out, but if we're being more efficient, we're gonna get more work done for the residents and for the community. We did a quick community comparison of twenty communities in our area, and all but two of them have a Department of Public Works. Only other towns are Dunstable and Townsend, three if you include Tingsborough, but as you can see, most other communities already have a Department of Public Works. How this will be structured uh in Tingsborough, it will be a Department of Public Works under the authority of a DPW superintendent. However, one of the largest departments, which is the sewer department, is still going to have some authority under the control of a sewer commission. Chairman Kohane was delegated from the Board of Selectmen to work with this existing sewer commission, along with myself, we met with them on several occasions. We've come up with a plan that, as part of this DPW, the sewer commission will remain elected, they'll remain responsible for current and future sewer construction projects, they'll remain responsible for setting the sewer rate and oversight of all expenditures in the sewer enterprise fund. Those were their priority items, and we came up with a, a compromise with the sewer commission that they were happy with, to keep them in charge of those items, but the DPW superintendent will be charge of operations and maintenance of the existing system and their staff, along with the DPW staff and all of the other departments. Are there any questions on Article Eleven?
Billy Crawford. So I understand the current engineer is being considered to be the heir apparent as the first superintendent of public works. I mean, that's readily known. And that's fine, but section two of the special act says the superintendent shall be a person specially fitted by education, training, and previous experience to perform the duties of the office. So be it, as long as our engineer has those qualities. Until this evening, I'd seen very little information about the cost of this, ever mentioned, and I've, you know me, I look, I look at a lot of videos and look at a lot of the meetings. So I'm glad you, you mentioned the administrative cost, I think the five thousand may be a little light, okay? And I also sent you an email asking you about, it looks like we'll have an additional ten or fifteen thousand dollar cost.
Right.
Okay? So the other cost that came to my mind is because of the Department of Public Works Supervisor's additional workload, will he be able to perform the engineering duties that he currently does, or are we gonna have to farm some of that out too?
So we're, it's, those are great questions. The existing work that he does as a town engineer, um, he designed some smaller projects for the town, and he does those in-house, and then he coordinates very closely with the highway department to complete those jobs. For some of our larger projects, large survey of a mile of road, um, putting those plans together for our large road paving projects, he has to work with a lot of consultants on a regular basis to do that, very similar to the sewer commission, and that work's going to continue. He's an engineer, but he's not gonna be designing the future sewer phases, those larger projects will um still be farmed out to teams of engineers. I, I think you're right that the more administrative duties he takes on, um, the less he'll, less time he'll have to perform some of um that work. But ultimately, the work he's doing overseeing the department is going to be work he's doing to create efficiencies within the department by overseeing things. So on one hand, he'll have a little bit less time to be drawing up plans, but his oversight, you know, the plan is, will be creating efficiencies, so it'll be made up on that end.
And let me just give you one example, Billy, too. So what, what we've seen is, you know, we know we have a lot of drainage issues on our roads right now, uh, and it's becoming more and more apparent, there's a lot more than, than I even thought, uh, a little while ago. One of the things with the DPW with Jake, uh, right now, if we were to outsource that particular drainage project, Jake would have to have very detailed plans developed, because we're gonna, we're gonna put it out to bid, then somebody comes in, they do the work, and we have to check it. What we'd prefer to do is have Jake, he doesn't have to do the detailed plans, he knows what he needs to do on the drainage, and now he's a DPW Director, he gets the highway department to, to, to actually do the work. So he goes out with the highway department, he doesn't have to do the detailed engineering plans, he knows what he needs to do when he gets out there, uh, and that's usually like a fifteen to twenty thousand dollar project, you would outsource that. So if we can bring that in, that's one efficiency that we can do, that reduces the amount of engineering work he needs to do because he doesn't have to, uh, we don't have to outsource it. So that's, that's one example of what we can see from efficiency, and he won't have to do as, as detailed engineering specs uh before he does the work.
Thank you, Ron.
You're welcome.
Okay, I understood what you said. I, I don't wanna get into the weeds, because we're not supposed to be for or against this today, okay? So I don't wanna get into the weeds on it, I hear what you said.
Yep.
I don't believe the savings are gonna offset the expense in the long run, my opinion, your opinion, okay? The other, the other thing, so you covered, I covered that. You talked about the, the way, the salary range, that was perfect, we did that. The other thing, I want, I understand that the Department of, Board of Health, the DPW will not be involved, supervisor will not be involved with setting rubbish rates or trash, be involved with trash, is that, isn't that correct?
Correct.
That was, that was removed from...
Engel mentioned in here of Board of Health or trash recycling.
I know, but that was on the plate originally, that was taken off, that's done.
That was, that wasn't on the plate when we talked about the DPW, you're talking about the charter previously?
No, no, it was mentioned in one of the meetings and the, from the Board, and the Board of Health, and I can, I can...
Oh, and the Board of Health, yes, the Board of Health, uh, you know, maybe they mentioned it, I didn't watch the Board of Health.
I wasn't accusing anyone, I just know it was, it was, it was, it was spoken of.
Okay. So at the Board of Selectmen meeting, uh, in all the conversations we've had, uh, you know, uh, Department of Health, uh, garbage, recycling...
They're gonna, they're gonna keep dealing, they're gonna keep dealing with our trash contracts.
Right, it's not part of the DPW.
Some Boards of Health do get involved in trash contracts, but not ours. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. Next thing, will the DPW supervisor have the unilateral authority to institute fees such as stormwater?
The way this is currently set up, that the um rates and regulations, I just wanna pull up that section here. Department policy uh formulation, so unless otherwise um described in this section, the select board will be responsible for the establishment of priorities and policies to govern the operation of the department. So that would include things like fees, except for sewer-related fees, which the Board of Sewer Commissioners are responsible for setting those rates and regulations. And then, if the sewer commission ever decides to disband, the, um, that authority also goes back to the Board of Selectmen to then hold the public hearing for setting of the rates.
So you, you said it still rests with the, the select board?
Correct, yes.
Thank you.
Matt, uh, one more thing, if, if I'm reading, uh, you know, I have the guidebook here, uh, I believe this is by a majority vote, and it says two-thirds uh in this, so, uh, you know, we, we will go off and change that.
Yes, it's only a simple majority, absolutely. All right, we're on the last article, and this is a simple one, just a prior year unpaid bill, Buckley elevator for a hundred and seventy-five dollars that will be paid by the rec department. No increase in the budget uh funding request, it's simply gonna be paid out of fiscal twenty-three instead of fiscal year twenty-two. This is just an annual housekeeping article. I assume no questions on this, and, oh, Billy, Billy tricked us here. Because this is a special town meeting, it'll be a nine-tenths, yes. So the moderator will go for unanimous on this.
Yeah.
Uh, any other questions? I'll give one more opportunity, a few people came in a little bit late. Any questions on any of the prior articles for anyone who came in a little late? Did we get any emails calling from residents while we were waiting?
Just one email from Bert Bushman, asking if his dog is playing with their neighbor's dog in the neighbor's yard, if that would be a violation of leash law, which it would not be.
Sounds a little tongue-in-cheek, but if not, I would say, uh, if that's a legitimate question, I don't believe that would be a violation based on the new discretion that's provided. I'll ask the animal control officer just to be safe. All right, Chairman Kohane, any closing thoughts?
No, uh, thank you very much for putting this on. Uh, remember, everybody, uh, this coming Tuesday, uh, you know, our special town meeting, uh, seven o'clock at the elementary school, hopefully, uh, we'll see a lot of people show up, uh, that's part of our, uh, part of our democracy, everybody. Come on out and join us, and, uh, I hope to see you there.
Have a good evening, thank you.